Hey folks, 6 o'clock. I'm gonna call the meeting to order. The Council of Lykens is gonna share a prayer with us. We'll go ahead and stand, and then we'll say the pledge.
Heavenly Father, thank you for you, your love, your forgiveness, freedom to worship as we please, the freedom of this great nation. We ask that you wrap your arms around our meeting, touch everyone involved. Thank you to those who have attended. We ask that your will be done in any decisions that are made and any conversations that are had. In your name we pray, amen.
Thank you. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Call please.
Counselor Steele?
Here.
Counselor Toll?
Counselor Lykens?
Here.
Counselor Grabowski?
Here.
Counselor Keller?
Here.
Vice President North?
Present.
President Green?
Here. There won't be minutes approved tonight. We're gonna be taking care of the minutes at our regular meeting next week. Approval of the agenda. You see the agenda before you. I take a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
I make a motion to approve.
Is there a second? Counselor Lykens?
Second.
Counselor Steele? Any discussion? If you would favor say aye.
Aye.
And opposed? Motion carries. Couple of comments I think I would like to make. I wanna frame as best I can the discussion where we are. I know many of you have been here, and thank you for caring enough to come out. Really appreciate that. But as a reminder, I thought it would be helpful to kinda create a context for where we are presently. For 2026, we projected an income rise of about 1.5 to 1.8 million based upon historical precedent. In reality, we actually got a decrease of 500,000. That's about a $2 million swing of less for the 2026 budget than we anticipated off of the top. As many of you know, there's a capital case in process right now. The estimate on the cost of that case is about a million dollars. That was not budgeted. And so that's going to have to be attended to. In addition to that, we have for 2026, just the way the pay cycles for our staff work, we have a 27th pay. They're paid every two weeks and every now and again. Instead of 26 cycles of pay, there's 27. For our budget, that means a million dollars. And so before we start, we are about 4 million in the hole. That's the dilemma that we have faced and the strain that we felt, and I know many of you have felt. There is a rise in the cost of goods, the cost of services. And then we have election year. 2026 happens to be election year, which actually increases the costs associated with our election board. And we have the merit officer contract that has been the subject of a lot of conversation. All of these things, instead of a 3% to 4% bump in revenue, we're down about 10% for the global budget. That said, grateful for many who have worked prior to this year for several years, working on being fiscally responsible and creating a strong rainy day fund that allows us in a rainy day to be able to access some of those resources to help with the support. I'd like to use, if you'll bear with me just for a moment, a metaphor of a bicycle wheel. Bicycle wheel most of us are well familiar with. It has a tire that's on a rim, has a central hub with spokes that help provide balance. There's been a lot of conversation lately about the issue of public safety and the emphasis for our merit officers who provide excellent service in giving us as a collective county a public safety. And we're grateful for that. Public safety however is also a much broader, has a much broader meaning. I would think about the merit officers in some ways like the tire. They're where the rubber meets the road. They're the ones who put themselves in harm's way. Between the officers who are on the road, the staff who are at the jail, there are certainly people in the county who are closer to, for lack of a better phrase, where the rubber meets the road in terms of danger. But they can only do their job if there's a rim, if there are spokes, there are supporting pieces. And there are several parts of public safety as a county, and I don't want us to miss that as well. When I think about the folks at the jail and the staff who provide support for inmates, the folks in the prosecutor's office, in the public defender's office, these are critical roles in the realm of public safety. The court system, with our court staff and judges, provide a critical piece of public safety dispatch. Public safety doesn't mean much if there's not that 911 call you can make and that requires somebody to answer the phone. There's probation, there's community corrections, there's work release, there's the juvenile center, there's emergency management, emergency management folks who issue tornado warnings and sirens. And when trees fall and lightning strikes, they're helping to protect motorists. The public health department is a significant, has a significant role to play in public safety. And we've just experienced that here in these last few years when COVID hit. The highway department has a significant role in the roads and bridges. So without belaboring the point too much, I think you can see that the notion of public safety is wide and broad. And there are many spokes that provide support to the wheel to keep it aligned. Unless we work on this process together, it's going to be more challenging. When we're in our little cubicle and we're only looking at our particular set of issues, we're gonna be hindered as a collective from being able to do the best job we can as a whole. I wanna talk a little bit about our infrastructure because the hub of that wheel are departments like our finance, our auditor's office, our treasurer's office. The only reason we have effective rainy day fund is because we have auditors and treasurers who have invested the resources wisely. The assessors office, the importance of trying to accurately assess value of property. IT, which supports all of these departments technologically. This doesn't even count the maintenance of all the facilities and records. So I just wanna emphasize that all of the departments of the county are critically important to serve the citizens of the county. This doesn't rest with one group of folks. That said, we have, the next on the agenda is department heads with concerns. Do we have any particular department heads that, I know we've got a couple of issues. Our Counselor Keller brought up as a liaison to the surveyor's office. Is Ken here tonight? Yeah. There's some budgetary, what happened at our last meeting? Come on up here. Ken, just a minute. Is there was a glitch in the budget that took out, speaking of infrastructures, a few lines from your structure. And so we just wanted to visit those for a moment.
Dr. Green, Council, friends. We did miss a few that weren't on the general, or wasn't in the general budget last year that I asked for reassessment for this year, for going for next year. Looking at it, we will take away other services for 5,000. I'm working with the auditor, Todd, to see, and that has to do with training and development of staff. So we gave you 6,000 back from this year to next year. We're asking, we'll give you the 5,000 back, it's not like we're negotiating here, but I still need the printing and advertising for 5,000, office supplies for 3, and uniforms for 5, so 8,500. So basically, I'm giving you back 11,000 and asking for 85 of it back, $8,500. So it's $2,500 swing to the positive, back to the fund. I could live with that.
Okay.
So the 3900 line is the only one you can check out?
Correct.
Okay, so 16500?
Make sure we have the lines correct.
Yeah. So I'll give you back 3900 to keep 33, or have put 3300 in there this year, 2100 this year. We had 500 last, or this year, and 165. Leave that alone for uniforms.
Are you sure that's the right number?
Yeah, yeah it is, cuz I'm not keeping 4400, which is 6,000 for machinery. We're gonna put that back into the general fund. We won't use it for next year. We'll wait and see what comes out of SB 1, look to the previous year at that point.
So what we need are the numbers specifically?
Specifically?
The 165 line, okay, needs to be 500 for uniforms there, 500, okay. And then the 2100 line needs to be 3,000. And the 3300 line needs to be 5,000.
Correct.
Is that correct, Ken?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Thanks for taking care of us for next year.
Thank you.
You won't see me all next year.
Can you tell me what's up with them, cuz something's not matching with mine? I got the 6075, I got, stupid. I got 38525. I got 33056, 42242, 26, oh that one there is 20,600, the 600. You see that?
Why is it in green?
Thank you.
Oh wait, no, no, you know what? The 20,000 is right. I apologize.
No, it should.
I've got 20,000. Was that what the raise though? The 20,600, was that the 3% raise? Yes, it was.
Correct, correct.
Yep, I was wrong. Okay.
Yep.
Okay?
All right.
Are we good?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Anybody else have any questions for?
We don't need to vote on that, right?
What's that?
We don't need to vote on it yet.
Tuesday night is our budget vote.
For everything.
Unless anybody has an issue or concern with that. Thank you for clarifying that.
Appreciate it.
Okay. Any other department heads?
Good afternoon, Council. Scott Harler, Highway Superintendent. So I'm just here to clarify. So we're getting a one-time bonus out of the highway this year, correct? For 3%? Is that not a raise?
Yes, that's correct.
So it's a one-time?
That's the current proposal.
Okay. Well, that's why my concern is why I'm here, is cuz we're not general fund. We are not gonna be short money. I got all kinds of unappropriated money. I'll be leaving the highway next year after 35 years. It's gonna be taken over, so I'm trying to set the new folks up to be rolling down. But I can give you this paper and you can look it over. Not sure this is the right time for to do it, or just wanted to get it out there. But try to get them a higher one-time payout with, you don't have to find the cash, I already have it. So just wanted to help.
Appreciate your advocating for your staff. Also, we're trying to consider equity across the county.
Okay.
So, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Any other department heads? I'm sorry? Clerk?
Linda's not here, but her, she's on the way. Oh, is she? Yeah.
We can come back to her in a moment.
Okay. The other thing is, I don't think Andrew's here tonight, is he? Andrew Hannah? I talked to Andrew today. In his prosecutor 14 line, we're gonna reuse one of those lines. It's line 16163, the insurance line. So I talked with him and I did the average over the last three years and I took the average of, I had Todd pull me, or actually Kirk pull me the, what's been spent out of that line so far this year based upon the next three months. I kinda did an estimate. We can reuse that to 130,000.
Which one is that number?
That is 16163.
Gotcha. What was the number?
130,000. It was 190, it's coming out. And I had one thing in the sheriff's budget. Oh, hang on, Sheriff, hang on. Oh, I know. In the sheriff's budget, I had a question, so. Is that fine? Can I ask you a question, Sheriff? I don't know if I can. In the, um. In the sick pay line. In her spreadsheet, it said 50,002, no, it said 45707, but on there we have 50, 5245. You know which one it's supposed to be?
I believe it's the 50, if I'm correct.
What we did with, Warren and I went through each line for sick days that had been used. That money is appropriated for the sick payout in the beginning of the next year, 26. So we reduce that payout to what we actually physically need for that. So that's the 45707? That was last year's. That was last year's, okay. So it is the 5245. I just wanna make sure I got the right number.
Yeah.
You can take that down to 43940. Well, that's even less than 45. So how much is it? 43940, 43940. Okay, thank you. You sure? Did you get that, Karen?
I did.
Okay, that was the only question I had there.
While we're on the sheriff's budget, are we, is this gonna be the time we discuss, you know, the bargaining committee would like to address, you know, a member of the bargaining would like to address the council in regards to that? Or is that gonna be a further discussion after you get through this?
We're coming to.
Okay. I just wanna make sure we get a chance on that.
Absolutely.
Thanks, sir.
Thank you.
Would Linda, I think I wanna say on that, that is for the merit payout only. When we were, when we had monies left over, we also used that when officers left to pay. So that is, if you understand what we're using that. But we'll be like any other department that will put in the money, the request towards the payout of the insurance budget. Okay. So you're good with the 43940? Is Linda okay with us just going ahead and making the changes in those two lines she told me about? Okay.
Well, we can attend to that later. And with regard to the group insurance piece, if we're going to move, one of the discussions was the group insurance. That was part of the discussion about trying to work on creating a budget that was feasible for the state. In discussion with Todd, we talked a little bit about the 27th pay allocated out of the rainy day fund that we could actually allocate into the group insurance to write that, to go from 4.3 to 5.3 again. Started at 5.3, we took the million out. When I had a conversation with the senior account executive for the insurance administrator, she said it didn't really matter whether it was in that line or it was just available. But in discussions, we found it might be helpful to actually put that, reinstate that line. The question I have, Todd, is do we put that back in now or do we just establish the?
Can you bring up the rainy day fund?
No, that's what I'm asking right now. What's the thinking is?
You'll see in green on the screen, we've put a million dollars up in the commissioner's group insurance line and we've reduced the 27th pay down to 1 million from 2 million.
And replace it with that.
That earmarks it, and then if you need to, next year, you can change your 27th.
The issue is just whether we need it or not, we don't know. We just need to have it earmarked to make sure that it's available.
Can you move back to the general? You're welcome. Is that what you wanted to see there? Okay. Can you move back to the general fund? Can you move to juvenile probation? Tracy Lane had a problem with her budget too. Just wanna make sure you're aware of it, that you have it on your screen. Okay. If you see, this is the juvenile probation budget. We just flipped those two amounts. Had something to do with physicians, but the amounts are the same. They're just swapped in the lines if you wanna make the corrections on your budget.
So that's 516 and 518?
Can we scroll down? I saw one more green below that. Sherry Price also called in with a couple of changes I'd like you to look at. One, we had more, we had, I think, 50,000 some dollars budgeted in that first green line, 11105. And that they're paying out of a different fund, so that needs to be zero. And then there's, if you scroll through the adjustments there, 11206. Should be 58147. And I think there's a few more down below here. Okay. We'll slow it down. The first one was a zero, you probably like that one.
Okay, I had that.
You had the zero?
No, I did not. It was 50.
I know, that's wonderful, isn't it?
Make sure I'm not doing the wrong one here.
Okay, 11105.
11105 is zero.
Yep.
Okay.
The next one will be 11206, and it should be 58147. 147. The next one is 11710. And it should be 46,180.
46180?
Yes. Oh. Next one is 12513. And it's 46180 as well.
What is that, 461?
46180. Are there any more? Is that the last one? Can you put up the total for that department so they can make sure their totals match? Excellent. I think that was all the corrections that we had called in.
Okay. Thank you. Anyone here? Good? Any other questions?
Well, I have the one that I forwarded to you from the recorders office.
Yes.
Did we want it? That's in her enhanced access budget.
If you're going through the miscellaneous funds, we have a ton of the work that you ask us to do. If you'd like to go through those, we're welcome to do it too.
I'm gonna transfer the email to us, Todd. Can you email the new numbers to us on miscellaneous? You gotta speak out. They're in my room.
Okay.
Okay, so for the enhanced access, line 31,000 should be 45,000, which it looks like it is. Line 39,000 should be 80,000. Then line 44,000 should be 10,000. That's all I have on that.
Okay. Any other corrections? I need to have it square so that when Tuesday, we'll start counting already. Any other issues from your perspective here?
Only on the green highlighted, we took your direction from the last council meeting. You wanted all the 3% raises removed. We've done that. We've added 27th pay lines into those funds for the 3%. There were times in certain funds with the changes that were made, some of the raises were larger and whatnot. But when we added the 27th pay and the bonus into those funds, it would increase it above the advertised amount. So usually it was a minimal amount of money, a few thousand dollars. And we just tried to look at each budget individually and pick which line to take it from. So it's usually from either group insurance or other services charges where their numbers were larger, where they probably wouldn't feel the effect of it. So just wanted you to be aware of what we did on your behalf so that the budget wouldn't exceed the advertised budget.
Is that mostly, you think, because of the 27th pay? They didn't have those in a lot of the.
They didn't have those in a lot of the funds, so that was the problem amount. Because most of them had the 3%, which the bonus is the same amount, but they didn't have the 27th pay in there. So when we added those, some of those went over the advertised amount. And we would just try to adjust back to it. I do think there's a couple of funds that we weren't able to address. For example, the recorders' records fund is all salary, so there was no lines to take it out of. But if I had to guess, the DLGF won't complain about that. They're not funds that they really purview. You know, they're paying attention to your tax-driven, tax-levering funds. The highway fund, the rainy day fund, things like that. They're gonna really scrutinize those and you were fine in all of those. We did make some adjustments in those. We made adjustments in the health department. I called Stephen Aintel where we'd have to reduce the line. We made adjustments in the reassessment fund, so. But we didn't have any advertising issues that we couldn't adjust for.
Thank you.
You'd be comfortable square with where we are right now for Tuesday? Okay. All right. I think those are the other issues. Okay, wanna talk about the merit officer proposal a little bit.
President Green, I think Commissioner Garner may have wanted to speak.
Oh, sorry. Yeah, yeah, no, thanks for pointing that out. I didn't catch you there.
Good evening, Council. I just wanna be assured, we have to notify our insurance carrier by tomorrow at the latest because they are starting to build the plan and they opened enrollment for all the employees. And I hear that that's set aside in the rainy day fund. But you intend for that to get spent from the rainy day fund, correct?
Okay.
I just wanna make sure there's 5.3 million or else we're gonna be notifying 700 employees that their rates are gonna go up. Okay, thank you. We worked hard on that plan this year to keep it in line and made some changes to keep it at 5.3.
And we appreciate, I know the employees appreciate it. And I talked specifically with that account executive.
Appreciate it.
Dealing with the. Dealing with the way that insurance piece came out. So we're prepared. So we'll tell them to move forward tomorrow morning with 5.3 million in funding. That is correct. Thank you. Thanks for that. Oh, Lyda.
Yes.
Yeah, you're on. We are looking through the different departments and yours is the last one to, for our departments to make tweaks that were necessary from our last budget session, so.
Okay. There were just a couple of things that needed to be adjusted. I think it was just in error. So in the clerk's budget, line, it's in the payroll line, 11204, the camera operator, it looks like that when you put your spreadsheet together, because it was the camera operator's position moving from central records into the clerk's budget, you didn't give me the full year salary. So that needs to be adjusted up to the 37...
128.
37-128.
128, yeah. Can you make that correction?
And then in 390, in the clerk's budget, 390-000, other services and charges, that needed to be adjusted to include something new that was put on us this year where each department now pays for their own Laserfish software, something I think that either IT or the Auditor's Office always paid in the poll for all the departments. They divided it up, so I had to transfer money this year to be able to pay that and it was not put into, it was on my budget that I submitted, but when you guys went back to 2025, of course it wasn't there because it didn't get included in the last budget cycle.
What's that number?
That's 390-000, it's the clerk's budget.
What's the correction?
Oh, I'm sorry. 4,209. Other than that, it appears that the clerk 4D and the election board, which we worked on the last time I was here, are correct if those totals are the same as we left it. Do you want me to tell you what the totals are supposed to be?
Let's make sure we're...
Okay. I'm going to give you the clerks first. The one that we just talked about should be at 793,677.
Is that correct?
Yep. The clerk 4D should be at 92,387.
Okay.
And then the election budget, I think we all agreed, was at 74,774,783. Is that correct?
Yep.
And that's all.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Anyone else? Will we go on? So the frame of the mayor officer discussion, as most of you know, I expect by now, the mayor officers had discussion this past year, came to a contract decision or agreement with our commissioners, as has been done for quite some time. What we didn't know is that our names are on that contract as well. We weren't involved in those discussions, it created some concern because these numbers don't really, the numbers that came from that three-year contract didn't fit with where we are budget-wise and we weren't able to make it. And so that's created a lot of consternation trying to figure out a way through this and there's been, you know, it's been difficult. I really feel for our officers who've been, you know, the emotional swings have been challenging. We've been trying to figure out a strategy to meet the need because our officers are not adequately paid and the commissioners, in discussion with them, were simply trying to put them in a place where they could be adequately fairly paid in reference to other departments in this area. And so that's been, that's been one of the challenges that we've been facing. And so we've been brainstorming that, trying to figure out ways. We talked at the last meeting about doing 11% this next year on a bonus to see if we can do that. We had kind of agreed to that. And then this past, this past week, you know, I know the commissioners met again with the mayor officers. I get the idea of trying to figure out some other way to do it, it's just, again, no one communicated with us and we have to be able to find something that works for the budget. And so what I have done is tried to put together a proposal that requires some give from several different parties to try to make this thing work. And so I have communicated with the sheriff, I've communicated with the commissioners because this last week, I think it's been pretty obvious that the sheriff is advocating on behalf of his staff, good for him, he should be doing that. The commissioners have certainly stepped up and said, hey, we, you know, we think this is, this is what is needed. As you might imagine, we've had a lot of other staff across the county say, well, wait a minute, what about us? And that's, that's an understandable concern. You know, we have one department asking for 21% raise and we have hundreds of employees in lots of other departments, many of whom are very involved and engaged in public safety in just different forms, who are wondering, what about them? So it feels, it's felt a lot like a really tight spot. And so what I have done is tried to come up with a proposal that is a, some kind of compromise that is an option. And I understand, I'll say right from the beginning, I was talking to Council of Bravowski earlier, it's like in the end, each one of us is one vote, any decision takes four. And so I'm going to put a proposal on the table. I had a conversation with Councilor North earlier, she's put together this proposal in numbers form. We just need the one. And so I'm going to pass this out, I'm going to kind of explain what this proposal is for my colleagues and for you to try to understand and then we'll have a discussion about this or any other proposal that anybody else would have. So what this is, is requires several parts working together to make a whole. All the parts are important. So what I'm proposing is that we issue a 21% raise for our mayor officers for 2026 that will continue, because, you know, the idea of a one-year contract is great, except that when you come to 2027, you're going to not want to take a 10% cut in pay. So we, whatever we decide has to be sustainable. So we're trying to create a sustainable strategy that honors our officers and yet provides what the rest of the county needs and what we need to do budget-wise. So that 21% will be maintained actually for two years. So I'm proposing that when we make that raise for 26, it will be the same for 27. We're trying to get through, these next two years are particularly challenging with the new law, there's a lot of uncertainty already, the legislators are having discussions about how they can tweak it, we don't know what that's going to mean for us financially, but we think there's a way through to at least secure two years. The, another piece of that picture is that the benefits, which were roughly 120,000 a year, 115,000 or so, are cut in half. In order to make this, we've got to, we've got to trim the benefit piece at least in half. I know the benefits are important to the officers, but clearly they were, they articulated that the pay was more important and so this is prioritizing that. We're asking, what we're asking of the commissioners and the sheriff, the sheriff has a million dollars in his commissary fund, we're asking for 300,000 to be put in to pay other costs associated with the operations of his department. If he's able to do that, then that creates a release of 300,000 to be able to put toward the mayor officer contract. We're also asking the commissioners who have negotiated, I'm asking, I should say, I'm asking the commissioners to release 600,000 of the interest money for the contract. So for you who are looking at the sheet here, you will see the benefits piece, the actual number is 114,966. These are numbers you gave us, so we're operating under the assumption that they are accurate numbers, right? So half of that would be 57,483, that would be the benefits that we would put in and we will negotiate how the officers want to put that into the budget. I'm proposing that what we'll do is we will pass our budget on Tuesday because we have to pass a budget to go to the state, we're not going to be able to orchestrate all of this and fix it by Tuesday. What we're going to do is pass a budget that's, that works for us and then we're going to figure out how to make this work and that's what this is about. So for the salaries, there's the 21%, that would be 527,245. And if you put that with the, with the benefits at half, that would, that amounts to 584,000 per year for 26 and for 27. That total is 1.17 roughly million dollars. So what we need to do is come up with 1.17 million dollars. So if the sheriff is able to contribute 300,000 from the commissary, which in my discussion with him, he didn't like very well, but said he'd be willing to do it, that's what it took because he felt that level of commitment to the officers. And the commissioners who I've talked with, who didn't like it very well, but felt like, you know what, we want to support the officers, we'll see about coming up with 600,000. If we're able to come up with 900,000, that leaves a balance of 269,000 that the council is responsible for, that doesn't count FICA, a FICA for the officers is going to be just shy of 100,000. So our total that the council will be accountable for is just 369,192. So what that amounts to is about 185,000, which is roughly what we had talked about, contributing out of the Rainy Day Fund for the 11% increase for the next two years. If we do 185,000 out of the Rainy Day Fund for the next two years and the sheriff contributes the 300,000 and the commissioners contribute 600,000, we have enough resources to be able to cover two years with a 21% increase. What that requires is each party, that requires us to contribute what we can and the sheriff's department and the mayor officers and the commissioners. Like any compromise, there's probably something in there for everyone to dislike. That said, it's, I think it's a workable option. In addition to that, however, there would be a, we made reference to the one-time bonus for staff, I'm proposing a one-time bonus to staff of 5% to all the other staff with the exception of a relatively few, and that would be anybody making 100,000 or more, the commissioners and the council. Everybody else would get a 5% bonus. In addition to that, a commitment that there would be no further raises in the sheriff's department until other employees get raises to accommodate for them. And the last piece, or spoke in the wheel, if we want to use the metaphor, because it's going to require all of these pieces to be in place in order for this particular proposal to work, would be that we engage a hiring freeze so that, because one of the things that both Councilor North and Councilor Lycan articulated, I think, well at our last meeting, is we are, we are going to struggle moving forward as a county to hold the weight of the employee salaries. And so what I'm proposing is that we put a hiring freeze on, we know that there are certain positions that are just simply necessary, but we have a personnel board and my proposal would be that we, that anyone who, whether there's a transfer or somebody takes a different job or whatever, that that goes, that that decision goes before the personnel board. Personnel board brings it under consideration and if approves it, brings it to the council. And with approval, we hire. But short of that, we don't. And I, I think that helps us on the longer run, try to work at management, you know, one of the challenges that we faced actually with any budget constraints is that about, I think roughly, Todd, you can help me with this, I think you said it was about 70% of our budget are employees. So, you know, you can only cut other non-employee expenses so much. And so we know there are small departments that don't have very many staff, that to lose a person would be, you know, impairing. That's not the case for every department and so we're going to have to figure out ways to tighten our belt and to do that in a way that seems fair, reasonable, equitable, et cetera. So I've put that on the table, you guys have it in front of you. Curious to hear what you think.
That was a lot really fast for me.
That's okay.
So I was trying to take notes. It's a lot to comprehend when I've not seen it ahead of time to process.
Yeah, sorry about that.
That's okay, I just want you to back up.
I've constructed this in the last 24 hours, so, yeah.
Well, I appreciate all the hard work you've put in on it. So you said a 5% employee bonus? Did you say bonus or did you say raise?
Bonus.
Bonus, okay.
Instead, we talked about a 3%, I'm suggesting that be 5%.
Okay.
And I think also our goal is with the hiring freeze and the reduction in our workforce, that we're going to be able to go back with some of those funds to be able to, it's going to be two purposes. One, it's going to help us prepare for what's coming down the pipeline financially. And number two, it's going to allow us to be able to give salary increases where they need to be with the remainder of our employees that haven't gotten raises now for two years, it's going to be the second year in a row, that they have gotten nothing. And we need to be able to, we can't give raises where we're at right now. So that will help to alleviate some of that pressure and hopefully be able to come back in and get some increases on some salaries.
Well, I know we've talked about a hiring freeze at multiple meetings and we've not acted on that. I think we maybe should go ahead and do that today. So I make a motion that we implement a hiring freeze, but excluding dispatch and the sheriff's department and have it effective immediately.
Why would you exclude departments?
Just because of the readiness for the dispatch and the sheriff's departments responding to calls and...
Okay.
That's my motion.
Okay. Is there a second, sorry, I should ask to see if there's a question?
Yeah, there's, Christie, there's, we probably need to think this a lot further. And this is the first time I've heard it also. I mean, there are departments such as Mr. Harless and the Highway Department that funds themselves. There are, I know a lot of replacements in departments, I could see internal departments, you can move people around, but, you know, you could restrict outside, hiring freeze to outside, you know, let people move around inside and see where the hole lies, those sorts of things. I think we still got to give, let department heads run their business. But our goal is to, and if you empower them to, let's find out where we can reduce some reduction in force naturally. And I think knowing that we're going to take that money and fund raises for the future, I think the incentive is on them to declare what positions aren't necessarily needed, but still allow some internal transfers without restrictions. but still allow some internal transfers without restrictions. I mean, and to your point also, sheriff department or dispatch, highway, people, well, I mean, prosecutors and public defenders, they have ratios they have to meet. We just can't say if a defender or prosecutor leaves, we're not going to fill that. There's some things we really have to consider by department.
Which is why I'm suggesting that we have a personnel board that comes up with all of those. And certainly they need to have, I mean, it, you know, it's not like there's a default of not hiring, per se, it's just, it's just, there's a screen protocol in that, so that if positions are necessary, they can fill. But nonetheless, we have, we have a motion on the table. Is there a second to that motion? There's no second to that motion, so the motion dies right now.
I would like to see the personnel board begin to put together a policy with input from us, the commissioners, because you're going to have to canvass department heads to find that. I know even in our budget, we've got some people scheduled to retire next year, and they had succession plans in place. Do we honor those? I mean, there's, this is complex and...
Sure. That's why, that's why, that's the very narrative of a personnel board.
Of finding out where our unnecessary, nonvalued activities are.
Sure.
And let department heads find those.
Well, I've always, I've always said, you know, you don't want the council to make these cuts.
No.
The department heads are the ones who know your departments, and you honestly, you know, I've heard this 100 times, no department's going to give a cut because they don't want to let go of their employees, they need them all. Guys, I understand that, but at the end of the day, we have to cut our employment force. And I'm going to need you guys to dig in and to really start looking at your departments and see where you can come back with some cuts. And I know I don't want to fire people necessarily, but I think that we can, there is waste in every department, and I know you guys don't think you do, but we've got to work harder so that we can give salaries that are decent salaries. And we can't do it with the workforce we've got, so we need the department heads to step up and to make those decisions.
I'll make a motion that we implement a hiring freeze effective immediately across the board.
Second.
So there's a motion and a second to implement a hiring freeze immediately across the board. Is there a discussion?
Yeah, I can't support that, you're carte blanche, without, we really need to come forward with a policy first. Because personnel board has to meet, then council has to meet, and we're delaying some of these position refills. I know it's going to come, there'll be some, but all across the board is probably overreach on our part.
In the context of your motion, is there a consideration of nobody gets hired because it's fairly cut and dry, or is it to go before a personnel board?
To go before a personnel board, yes.
Okay, I just want to, I want to make sure I'm clear, I'm understanding what you're...
Yes, thank you for asking for the clarification, because my intention would be that they would need to come before a personnel board to make, to make sure that it is a position that we, that we do need to fill. And as far as the overreach aspect of it goes, the council is the body that decides the number of employees and the pay for employees. So I think it would be well within our role to do that.
And we have two of our members who serve on the personnel board. So to your point, the question, comment, we should be involved, actually, we would be, you know, and we would be by virtue of the fact in bringing that recommendation back. There, I think it seems reasonable that there is an expedited, I mean, there might be situations in which it would be expedited. I think obviously if one of our department heads leave, we need to replace them, and that's not a question, so...
Internal transfers where someone leaves and they're going to have to fill, or they move into that slot, it's better for them, you still have a hole to fill.
Well, and the personnel board could actually create a mechanism for that.
Well, that's what I'm talking about, we need a policy before we just say no to everything.
With regard to what you said earlier about letting this sink in, and so for a few of us, this may be new news, and we are meeting on Tuesday. I guess I would appreciate a couple more days to think about this. Is there a reason to do it this evening versus Tuesday, or is it...
Not to my knowledge. I wouldn't, I don't think it's going to hurt to wait those few days just to think about it. You know, the members that's not present, that that...
I don't have an issue either way. You know, I mean, I'm not sure there's much difference between tonight and Tuesday night, but I mean, a lot of people will be hired in the next two business days, I don't know. But if you guys are open to the idea of bringing this to Tuesday night, we can do that, yeah, we can have a look, so...
Not opposed to wait until Tuesday night, but I would really encourage the remainder of the council to come up with some options on what we think that guideline looks like.
And that might be a very reasonable thing to just, to kind of your point of are there some policies around that that might be wise to give guidance to a personnel board, you know, kind of thing, so...
So do you want to come up with guidance for the personnel board then, for then? Is that what you'd like, or, I guess I'm really okay either way, I was just, maybe not everybody's comfortable doing that.
I'm saying, I'm fine waiting, Diana. I'm saying that we have five days as a council to consider what that looks like then, because I'm not opposed to a hiring freeze, I think it's necessary, but what does that exactly look like? Is it all or none? Is it certain departments are disqualified from that process because of their size? So I'm encouraging the remainder of the council, including myself, to give this some thought so that you can come to the meeting Tuesday with some options and ideas.
And there's options to internal hiring, internal department transfers, I think need to be considered different, and outside hires. You could look at outside hires, because that keeps us from bringing new in, at least letting internally fill for now until we can come up with a policy.
I still want you guys to have an idea of policy for next week, Tuesday.
Well, we've been given such gracious notice.
I know, right?
So I'm going to go back to our motion and second.
I have no more discussion.
Would you prefer to have a vote?
I think I'd like to go ahead and have a vote, and then we, if we do want to do the hiring freeze, we vote yes, and then on Tuesday, we would come with our ideas for the policy to how it's implemented.
Okay. So...
So would the motion be hiring freeze contingent upon future ideas, or how do we, I don't want to get into something we regret, that's all.
Well, we can lift it at any point.
It's fair.
Sure, okay.
So a motion on the table is a hiring freeze pending a further discussion Tuesday about ideas with regard to policy and direction to personnel board, and effective immediately across the board. We'll do a roll call.
Councilor Steele?
No.
Councilor Liggins?
No.
Councilor Grabowski?
Yes.
Councilor Keller?
Yes.
Vice President Norberg?
Yes.
Councilor Green?
Yes. Motion carries. We'll have that, we'll have that discussion added to the agenda for Tuesday. Okay, back to, so we diverted a little bit?
Sorry.
That's okay. That was one of the, I want us to go back and, and I apologize in a way for the complexity and lots of moving parts here, but also it seemed, it's a fairly complex situation, it seemed like there were a lot of parts that might need to be put into place in order to make it happen. And so if anybody has any other ideas, I'm more than open to them. Try to find a solution here.
I have a question about the benefits for the merit officers.
Yes.
And so there's a 50 percent reduction in benefits here, which, what I'm looking at is just a monetary figure, and so what does that actually mean for the officers?
Actually, that would be, that would be their decision. So from my...
So we're just giving them half the money and they decide how they reduce the benefits?
What we would do in a negotiation is we would say, this is the amount of money that's available, how would you like, how would you like to utilize that in the context of the benefits? That's, that's their give, that they're getting their 21 percent, their give is on the benefit side because we are constrained on the budgetary side.
Wouldn't we talk about benefits? These are the increases for training and certifications.
These are insurance, and, no, these are all of the, these are above and beyond the benefits.
These need to be sold out.
Right, the benefit package that exists today stays in place with an additional 60,000 dollars in benefits, just not 120,000 dollars in benefits. How they want to distribute, you know, do they decide they want to have a drone operator or, I mean, there's a whole lot, set of ones. I mean, we could make that decision, it just makes more sense to me to have them make that decision.
So is this a contract that we're entering into with this?
So we're, well, yeah, I'm proposing the structure for which we could have a contract negotiation. We could, we could make this decision, when I, when I discussed with Mr. Culp about the way this would unfold, our budget has to pass for Tuesday night, we're not going to have a contract conversation tonight, in the sense of sign on a dotted line. We can have, we can make all of these corrections after the budget goes to the state so that these can be modified for next year. So, yes, this is, this is a framework within which we can have a contract discussion, that my proposal would be that we have council members, commissioners, sheriff, merit officers sitting around the table, because in the end, everyone has to agree to their part and sign on the line.
So just to understand, so we're talking a 21 percent salary increase?
A 21 percent salary increase.
And, and then the next year, there's not a salary increase, it's just continuing on?
They would continue to make that same pay with that longevity, we have yet the longevity piece in place, but there would not be any adjustment in salary in the second year. They would just be able to maintain that salary.
Okay.
With this.
And then after that, they would still be at that salary, it's just...
After that, we have to, I mean, when we're in '27 discussing the budget for '28, this would be a part of the conversation. I think a two-year contract could be negotiated, put in place, and then all of the parties need, in my opinion, all of the parties need to be sitting at the table who are going to be signing their names on the line. It isn't appropriate that we have our names to sign on the line and not be sitting at the table having the discussion. That's not the way a contract negotiation should work, in my mind.
So it's my understanding, I think they would take this back to their board and have them discuss that, if they would accept that or not.
Right. What I would propose is that they discuss what they need to as part of this framework. If we decided, yes, we think this is a reasonable framework, and then we would have to have a meeting of the parties that are a part of this arrangement, which would be us, the commissioners, the sheriff, and the merit officers.
Okay. So are we going to discuss tonight whether or not there is support for the contract that the commissioners just revised on, say?
We can certainly, we can have that, any of those conversations. I just, this is, again, just a reminder, this isn't, I'm not saying in any way that this is what has to happen, I'm just saying this is my proposal. We can have a discussion about any other thing.
Okay. So as you know, the commissioners revised the contract to a one-year contract, 21 percent. And this is the second time that the commissioners have entered into a contract, so they've endorsed a 21 percent increase for our merit officer. So they, I feel like have said that that is what they would like to see their salary set at. I really appreciate all the work that's gone into this, so I think it's, I think it's important to think outside of the box sometimes on these things. But I know that we have a contract out there, I'm sure they would like to see what we would do with that contract, so I would just like to make a motion tonight, if we would consider, make a motion on approving that contract that the commissioners, the one-year contract.
We don't have that contract. What is your motion?
My motion is to approve the contract that the commissioners would revise on Tuesday.
Okay. Do we have that contract?
I don't have it in front of me, I don't know, it's...
I think, well, is there a second to the motion?
I'll second it so we can discuss it.
Okay, all right. So there's a motion and a second. I think personally it would be difficult to consider, I'm not comfortable signing any contract tonight, I'll just say that upfront, I'm not going to do that myself. And I'm glad to look at it and consider that, just not tonight.
And Kristi, how do you propose that will be funded?
So, what I know is that, I'm one of seven, tonight it's one of six, but I think we can all come together and come up, we all have our own ideas on how we can fund this possibly. I have my own ideas, but I would like to hear, you've had some great ideas on here as well. Some of the ideas I have is if we could consider increasing the percentage of the levy to 83 percent, that 1 percent would give us an additional 283,447 dollars. Some of the other savings could be, we have, the jail officers are going to a 12-hour shift, and there'll be some savings in overtime from that. And then, Jody, I don't know if there's any additional public safety funds, I know that there, there were some reductions there, I wasn't sure what we might have that could be funded out of the public safety fund for that.
I think there's, hold on, I'll get it for you. I think it's 96,000, right around there.
Well, having the hiring freeze in effect now, we could have some savings from that, from any open positions that we currently have right now, that we could possibly roll into the budget. I understand that some of the department correction payments are coming in now. So these are just some of the ideas that, that I've been thinking about, how we can maybe get to that number. There are, maybe we could look at any one-time expenses that are currently in our budget that could be moved into the rainy day fund to free up some things in our general fund budget. So those are just some of the things that I've thought of. I don't know if anyone else has anything they would like to add.
So the total contract would be around 577,113 dollars additional on top of, on top of what we're already budgeted for. I just want to make sure that everybody understands that the money that's coming in from corrections right now is money that was due us this year, it's not past money that was due, from what I've been told so far, and that has already been included in our revenue source for our overall budget for the year. So I don't really think we can count it twice towards something else, if that makes sense. I did hear that the 12-hour shift's a month to play, of course, we haven't seen that, that starts in the beginning of next year, we haven't seen what that's going to be as far as, it's not money to theoretically, if that makes sense. Those are just some of my thoughts.
Does your proposal, President Green, doesn't this fund not only one year but two years, just not the full benefits, or the, correct?
That's correct.
So we're short the 57,000?
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's, we're discussing the motion on the table. Which is, the motion is to approve the one-year contract signed by, signed or approved by the commissioners.
Yeah, but that's my point, that this does that with the salary minus half the benefits, but for two years, with the cooperation of the sheriff and commissioners, so this is another mechanism to do it.
Right.
Yes.
The only thing is that might not pass their board. I don't know if that's some, I mean, I don't know if Mason would want to discuss that or not, if you want to open up, but I don't know, I don't want to...
No, this is a bunch of discussion.
Okay, okay. So I was just thinking, they have a contract that their union has approved, the members have approved, the commissioners have approved, just putting it out there.
Sure.
Well, what I was getting to is the 57,000, if that's the only thing short of fulfilling that contract for one year, we can take 57,000 more out of Rainy Day, I'm not opposed... I'm not opposed to $57,000 more. And that would fulfill the contract. And, you know, yeah, there are, I think we're going to know the lit fund or the percentage going above 80, I know we're risking, we're risking already that and keep bumping it up to, till you hope it comes in and is, can be dangerous. I mean, we don't know what it's going to come in at with all the shakeups that's happened.
Well, and the levies, you know, I don't, I understand why Todd keeps it at 80% of the levy because there's property tax caps that have to come off of that, and we don't always know how that's going to play out. Sometimes we don't.
Property tax appeals are in place for a lot of people.
Pay money back on some of those things, so it's, it's a safe number, and we've already pushed that to 82. I feel okay with the 82, but I, it's still a risky move that we might be short. And I mean, at the end of the day, you do not, I mean, at least in my budget, I don't spend every dime I make because if you do, then you get yourself in a pickle at the end of the month sometimes and you can't pay your bills. So I don't want the council or the county to be in a position not to be able to pay bills. I don't want to be in a position where I say, sorry guys, you don't get paid this week, we're going to have to lay everybody, bunch of people off if we can't make a payroll. I mean, I don't want to be in that position.
So there's a motion and a second on the table. Is there other discussion? Seeing none, a roll call to approve the budget as approved by the commissioners?
Counselor Steele?
Wait, what, what?
Contract?
Yes.
Do you have a contract?
Yes.
Counselor Lykins?
No.
Counselor Grabowski?
Yes.
Counselor Keller?
Yes.
Vice President North?
No.
President Green?
No.
Okay. So we're back to trying to discuss and process an option.
What you put, what you put forward essentially will get that minus $57,000 to fulfill that contract.
And it's for two years, so it's a better deal.
And it's for two years and it's funded.
Yes, fully funded. With no guesswork on the 83%.
No offense to you, I appreciate it. If we approve the contract for the merits as is, then it's our responsibility to come up with money within our budget to do that, and I don't know how we're going to do. Now, I'm not talking about that portion, I'm talking about all of it.
Yes, I really like it.
Including this and that.
Oh, so you're saying minus the sheriff's contribution?
Yeah, I'm saying that if we're going to pass a contract.
It only works if the sheriff and the commissioners.
I thought you had agreement from them, at least in principle, that they would be a partner with us.
Yes. But again, I mean, until, anyone can say whatever they like. But in the end, I think the reality is that we have to have a meaning, meaningful, understandable, fiscally responsible dialogue of all of the parties to come to a decision. I think we can do that. I think if everybody gives their part, everybody is willing to listen to the other, I think it can work.
I think what you put forward, minus half the benefits, let's go another $57,000, and then we will fulfill it, whether or not we sign a contract or not. When we put this budget forward and pass it, it does what they want.
Yeah, it would be actually an extra $120,000, well, across two years. An extra $57,000.
Per year, for $57,500. Fills the contract, whether it's signed or not, this is what they're going to get. We can sign it later because in my, not in opposition to signing the contract, we had no funding, and this really opens it up, especially, thank you sheriff and commissioners.
Yes.
Because we are, and that does show cooperation, and I'm really encouraged by that. I think we can.
What this would mean then with Rob's suggestion is, if you look at the bottom in green on that page, our contribution from, would be 369, 192 would be, you would have to add, you'd actually have to add 114, right?
Well, 57,40, yes, 114,966 for two years, yes.
That would, it would, it would, it would be that plus 114,966. But by my calculation, that would be about 483. If you want to do the actual.
That's for two years. I just, I just did it for one year.
And that would be divided by two, it would amount to roughly $240,000 per year that we would have to.
Because this is our portion.
Our portion is right here for two years.
One year. I'm looking at one year.
President Green?
You, you, I'm sorry?
Would it be appropriate for me to ask Commissioner Gardner to come up to the podium? I, I'm not going to ask him to commit to anything, but I, looking nice. I just have a question for him about, I just have a question for him if he's willing to come up.
Commissioner Gardner?
May I please ask a question?
If you're willing to.
Only if you're willing. Hi. I'm not going to ask you to commit anything for the commissioners. I know you can't talk on behalf of all the commissioners. My question's actually just about this idea that $600,000 could come out of the capital improvement fund. If the money is already in the fund for capital improvement, can it be taken out of that fund and then used for something else? With, like, can you approve it for that? Is there?
The short answer would be no.
Okay.
The policy would have to change, but keep in mind that you have a period of time, this was all in the back and forth, the legal argument and all of that, that there's a period of time in the collection process that the general fund is entitled to. So that would be the time when the cutoff of collections of property taxes, between that date and the date we send money out to all the taxing units, the interest that's earned in that period of time, which is about 40, 42 days, the general fund would be entitled to that, that money, because that's what the statute says.
And that amount of money is roughly what?
That, that amount of money, if I, I took this spring settlement and added to it last fall settlement, because we don't have this fall settlement yet, so that's the most accurate number I would have, would be $148,400 that we held. If you take that times 4%, which is, I think we can get 4% on that, 4% comes to $5.9 million, divide that by 365 days, and multiply that number, which is 16,200, 16,200 times 42 days gives, gives you $683,000.
So it is possible if the commissioners all three agreed to it, there is a legal avenue that it could be done?
No, that will come out of the capital asset fund, that will, that's already going to go over there. It's in the statute that we've mentioned, I mean, when, when the council and commissioners were butting heads about that and it was determined by the Board of Accounts that we were going down the right road, but in the statute itself, it says during that holding period, the general fund is entitled to that money for that period of time. So in the spring, if, if the, if the treasurer held that money for 43 days, that'd be another 16,000 in that fund. If it was one day less, it'd be $16,000 less in that fund, because it's interest per day at 4% divided by the number of days in a year, times the days we hold.
Talking about interest varying.
Okay. So it would be available to us to use?
It's available.
I just want to clarify that it will be available. Okay.
That was the.
And you don't have, you guys won't have to vote on that? It'll be available to us?
That's what the law says, so.
Is that the revenue that we've already planned for then?
We'll be planning for $50,000 interest for next year.
We plan for how much?
$60,000.
Okay.
Yeah, I don't, I don't know about that number or where that would come from, but.
Todd gave us that number.
Okay. So.
Anyway, the question's clear.
Yes, that helped, thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
From a mechanic standpoint, Counselor Keller, it won't come out of that fund, but once we have that number, we'll divert that interest into the general fund until that, that number's acquired. So that's how, that'll work out.
I think maybe it was just the way it was written on the paper, and I was thinking, I just wanted to make sure that we weren't vague on something that may not be able to come through.
That's not entirely accurate, the way it's written. It's the right amount, it's just not the right.
Verbage, maybe?
Verbage.
Okay, thank you.
So Auditor Culp, are we going to get that 42 days roughly come November, between settlement, between the tax?
Yes, perhaps.
Towards the end of the year, can bring some additional revenue this year too, another $300,000?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Well, to move forward with the discussion, that, because it's really, yeah, it's a, yeah, this is a, if you can agree or disagree about this, whatever, what I'm proposing is that we, we move forward with the structure of a plan so that we can then begin a contract negotiation and come to an agreement so that there actually is a contract for our officers for two years that, that all parties can agree to. That's the strategy here, which can be done after Tuesday. I, I think part of the concern has been, this has to happen by Tuesday because we're going to vote on the budget for next year, and if we vote on the budget for next year, nothing can change. That's, that's not true. There can be modifications in the way the budget is, well, I mean, you're going to be better at articulating this than I am, Todd, if you can help.
If you think about every, every meeting you have, you basically modify the budget because you're doing additional appropriations. It's no different than if you have a functional change in the budget, you, you would pass your budget and then have an amendment at the beginning of the year. Every one of those additional appropriations is amending the budget.
But we cannot do that until the fiscal year begins, correct?
That's, that's true. You could.
Even though we adopted November.
These, this contract, we can't change it. Plan that you have, you would figure that out, sit down, sign a contract, and you make the adjustments.
It's kind of pretty clean now in January, of course, it's just those decisions would have to be made then to make modifications.
Yes. So you can, you can modify in January at this point in time.
Right, and because we're discussing paying it out of the rainy day fund, we wouldn't have to make cuts in the general fund to make it balanced. And we can't pay it out of the rainy day fund right now anyway because we already advertised the rainy day budget for next year. So we would have to do it as in a disappropriation regardless. So that's why there's a.
It's not feasible to make the budget work.
Yeah.
By, to make all of these changes. That, that was not going to be feasible, but that, I think, doesn't limit the fact that we can make this work on behalf of our merit officers if all of the parties are willing to agree.
As it is, Bethany, our rainy day fund is going to have to be changed anyways come January because.
The 27th pay?
Yeah, well, that 27th pay was $2 million, but part of that, a million was for the 27th pay and a million dollars was for that payout that we were going to do to the merits and to employees. So we took that million away, that was the merit employee part portion of it, or the 27th pay this, this early, it doesn't matter which is which, it's going to have to go back in there to fulfill that, does that make sense?
It does.
Yeah.
So Counselor Steele, are you, are you wanting to tweak this then?
I'm in favor of the contract, or the proposal put forward with the 100% of benefits. I think the 57 and a half thousand's very minor.
I would.
We'll see. May I ask, Todd, what is the merit contract, what's in, what's in the council budget numbers?
Right now?
Can you go up to the sheriff, sheriff budget? I don't believe.
Well, it's in there right now, because there, right now it has the full benefits in there, yes, and then it has this is the long jetty, the pay lines.
So no, not the 21%.
And I'm just like you, I haven't seen a copy of the contract either that you guys are voting on.
It doesn't have the 21%, only it has the benefits.
Can we add the 21% in to the council numbers before now and Tuesday?
How are we going to fund that?
Yeah, I, I wouldn't, I don't think that's feasible.
Way up.
Okay. Well, it can happen after the first year. So on the benefits, those stayed in there, correct?
That's correct. The benefits are already in there, so they would just, they would just not, there would be no alteration of that.
Okay. So that is the 100% of benefits?
Yes.
Yes, that's correct.
So if we pass that budget as is, that, they're going to get the 100% of the benefits, and then we just then have to reappropriate January for any contract we agreed to?
Correct.
Thank you.
Okay. Anybody else? Any other, any other thoughts about a different way to do it?
We still have the PSAP. I mean, there's, that was brought up, been taken off the table, not only, I don't know for this, it wasn't the purpose, but also to get the dispatch center whole and try to clean up the mess with some paying and some not. I like the idea of PSAP. You can look into that later for next year, because we can still pass it, and it goes into effect mid-year, correct?
Yes, I think you can pass it up until.
About March.
November 1st. I think you can actually, it's by November 1st to start collecting at the beginning of the year, but I think you can pass it later in the year, halfway through the years.
But you do know that PSAP is gone in '28.
Right.
And I did give you guys, there's a couple other pages here where I just, I threw you guys a lot of numbers a couple meetings ago as far as the anticipated revenue that I did, and like I said, I'm not going to comment, but it's best I can do with what I've got in front of me, and you can look at that and digest it and see kind of where we're at. You don't have to do it tonight, I'm just saying.
Well, and our, our budget has to be submitted by the end of the month, right? October 31st, is that what?
Yes, but your adoption date is October the 14th.
Okay.
So that's, that's true, the DLGF standard has to be done by the end of the month, but you set an advertised public hearing date in your first meeting, that's September, your adoption date is advertised as October the 14th. So in order to change that, you have to start the process over, including the public hearing, and right now you passed that date.
So I don't like the idea of trying to make this a two-year contract. I think we need to make it a one-year contract, but secure the funds to know that the officers won't have to take a pay cut the following year, which is, yours would still do. But I think that by doing that one-year contract, we would then have the option for, for the merit officers and the commissioners and the council to renegotiate the contract moving forward. So I like securing the funding to be able to say, you're not going to have to take a pay cut the following year, but I think we should stick with a one-year contract so that the negotiation can happen with everyone around the table.
Sure. I was just thinking that on behalf of the conversation, on behalf of the merit officers, part of their concern was security, so.
But I think they'd also probably like a pay increase the following year if they can get it, and if we can fund it.
I would not agree to a pay increase the following year under any circumstances until the rest, a part of the condition, the rest of the county has to get the next raise.
It's been two years, it's not.
I, I wouldn't, I wouldn't consider that myself, but.
But we could guarantee the second year, there's not.
We can already guarantee the second year at that 21%.
Right.
And, you know, a lot may change between now and nine months from now, and we will start to see.
So could we?
Nobody can predict.
Would it be appropriate to make a motion to approve the merit contract with, on the contingency that the sheriff contributes $300,000 and that we can also have the $600,000 of interest money?
Yes.
Which is part of this plan.
Yeah, the contract is only a one-year contract.
Correct. So I'm saying, could we, could we approve the contract as written contingent on? Would it be appropriate to make a motion to approve the merit contract with the, on the contingency that the sheriff contributes three hundred thousand dollars and that we can also have the six hundred thousand dollars of interest money?
Yes.
Which is part of this plan.
The contract is only a one-year contract.
Correct, so I'm saying, could we, could we approve the contract as written contingent on receiving those funds?
You're talking about the current contract?
Yes.
Or this, that is, this proposal?
No, the current contract, but contingent on the sheriff contributing three hundred thousand and the commissioners contributing six hundred thousand.
That'd have to be written in the contract.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
Again.
I wasn't sure, and our lawyer's not here, so.
If the contract passed tonight, I'm not sure that it's just not necessary because we can, we can get it done right, in my mind, by taking the time to sit around the table and and work it through so that we can make sure that all of the parties are in agreement. I think if, you know, if the merit officers decide that they don't like this, I mean, that is their option. If the sheriff decides to walk away from the table, I mean, that's his option. But in the end, it does require all of the pieces to be put into place so that there can be this level of security. As I said, I I think there's something in this for everyone to not like, but it also, I'm done advocating for it, so. I'm putting this proposal on the table as a motion, and that we would, this would provide the framework within which we would begin dialogue with our merit officers, the sheriff and commissioners relative to the to the pieces.
I second that. I think it provides security, and I appreciate the other thinking. Yeah, I second.
Discussion.
Okay, so I just want to be clear about what exactly the motion is. So the, is the motion what you have before us with a hundred percent of benefits or with fifty percent?
Thank you for clarifying. That's with a hundred percent of the benefits.
Okay.
That's taken Rob's modification.
Okay, thank you for the clarification.
Other discussion. Roll call, please.
Counselor Steele?
Yes.
Counselor Lichen?
Yes.
Counselor Grabowski?
Yes.
Counselor Keller?
Yes.
Vice President North?
Yes.
President Green?
Yes. Motion carries. And with that, I'll take a motion for adjournment. Oh. Uh, no, actually, I apologize. I apologize. Thank you, thank you.
Okay.
I think I was just relieved that that was the case. I I'm, what, part of my proposal is the five percent piece for the for the employees. That was one of the considerations. I'm putting on the table a motion for a one-time five percent bonus for all other employees of the county, except those who make over a hundred thousand dollars, and the commissioners and the council. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Counselor North, discussion.
What is the, because you said a bonus, but with a caveat of over a hundred thousand? What was the?
Yeah, that that it wouldn't apply to anybody making more than a hundred thousand dollars, or the commissioners, or the council.
Okay. More than a hundred or at a hundred?
Hundred thousand.
A hundred, a hundred thousand or more.
Hundred thousand or more if it's not good.
I wish there was, I wishful thinking, but to do it as a salary increase, we just don't have.
Well, there there may be a way. If we structure this at quarterly payments, say, starting in February, so you're midway through quarter, and if we can make it permanent, you know, we can, we can amend the bonus to be permanent, but we're probably not going to know until later in the year, at least halfway through, when you start seeing first property tax collections in May, and we're probably not going to know until we just about start for the budget. And we could turn that into, rather than a budget, into full salary.
I'm in full agreement with you.
Yeah.
It's eight hundred thousand to a million dollars.
That's what I was wondering how much.
But I, but that's, and that's why I I proposed, you know, looking into quarterly payments, that way we can turn it, and then also somebody doesn't leave in March, but.
Roughly a five percent bonus payout is one million, thirty-one thousand, nine hundred and thirty-two dollars.
You say that again, please?
One million, thirty-one thousand, nine hundred and thirty-two dollars and ninety-five cents.
And that's the five percent payout?
And that includes bike on retirement.
Roll call, please.
Counselor Steele?
Yes.
Counselor Lichen?
Yes.
Counselor Grabowski?
Yes.
Counselor Keller?
No.
Vice President North?
Yes.
President Green?
Yes. Anything else on this?
President Green, I make a, I make a motion, we open the floor for comment, public comment. I'll second that.
Motion and a second for open to public comment. Any other, any discussion? Roll call, please.
Counselor Steele?
No.
Counselor Lichen?
Yes.
Counselor Grabowski?
Yes.
Counselor Keller?
Yes.
Vice President North?
Yes.
President Green?
Yes. Okay. We're open for public comment. Would anybody like to come and share? You have to state your name, where you're from, you have three names.
Mason Brizendine, I am from Alexandria, Indiana. Sixteen, the number of deputies actively pursuing outside employment is now sixteen. I provided you all with a conservative estimate of the cost to replace them. Any human resources professional will tell you retention is always more cost-effective than recruitment and rehiring. On Tuesday, an amended merit contract was proposed to the Madison County Board of Commissioners and favorably received. The only change was the term of the agreement. The merit body approved this modification by a majority vote to address your concerns over your uncertainty of Senate Bill One. It was not an easy vote, it was not a unanimous vote. This is us compromising for you. You ask for possible solutions to this? Well, my solution is to buy yourself time to sort this out before we're at an irreversible crisis point. Use rainy day money to honor the contract, consistent with progress made this week. Work together, continue to work with the commissioners, continue to communicate, continue to stay disciplined, and get creative. None of us on the merit body envy your positions. As you all know, the Madison County population elected you seven brilliant minds to solve complex human issues such as these. If it were as simple as here's the money, plug it into the lines, we would just have a computer do it. You're all tasked with making big human decisions which impact real human lives, and I cannot overstate how many lives will be affected by your decisions. I have proudly worked for this county since I was eighteen years old. Earlier this week, I notified my chain of command I've accepted a position outside of Madison County. My last day here is later this month. With the stroke of a pen, you all have the power to prevent a chain reaction. For any of you up there who question the marketability of these deputies, stop now. Any department would hire them in an instant. I hope you're beginning to understand their experience, their level of training, and their value to this community. Do right by the taxpayers of Madison County, do right by these men and women, fund this contract.
Thank you, sir. Hey, what else?
Counsel, my name is Jordan Allen. I've been employed full-time with the Madison County Sheriff's Department since July of twenty twenty-three. I currently serve on midnight shift patrol, a member of our SWAT team, a diver for the County Water Rescue Task Force, and a less lethal instructor for our department. I began as a reserve deputy in October of twenty eighteen while employed as a full-time firefighter for almost eight years. My roots here run deep. I started riding along with deputies when I was just sixteen years old. I was born and raised in Alexandria, and I've chosen to raise my own family here despite my wife serving as a detective for the city of Noblesville. Leaving the fire service was a difficult decision, but I knew law enforcement was my true passion and ultimately is what was best for my family. That's why it's so disheartening to see the lack in negotiation, communication, or basic interest from this council towards the deputies who serve you. Before joining the Sheriff's Department, I had the opportunity to work for other agencies outside this county, but I chose to serve here, the same community I've been a part of for thirty-two years, with the ultimate goal of being a top leader of this department one day. Understand this, the pay increase we're asking for is not just about money, it's about whether this council values the men and women who risk everything for it. Since two thousand and twenty-two, this county has had seven officer-involved shootings, three of those involving our own deputies. Extreme violence is rising nationwide, and I can assure you the risk to officers has never been greater. Yet despite that reality, we're paid the same as a Chick-fil-A manager. Every shift, deputies lace up their boots, put on their bolt-per-fest, and kiss their families goodbye, sometimes for the last time, for wages that insult the sacrifice. If that doesn't illustrate the seriousness of this issue, I urge you to reflect on what it does say about your priorities. If nothing changes, I can guarantee it will affect this county and the safety of its citizens for years to come. While you sit safely with your families in the comfort of your homes, we're outstanding between chaos and the people you were elected to protect. We don't get to look away, we don't get to turn it off, and we sure as hell don't get to walk away when things get hard. All we ask is that you stand with us, not turn your backs when we need you most, because when the danger comes, it's not you they call, it's us. Let me be clear, failing to honor this contract has real consequences. I have witnessed this pattern in other cities. Departments become stepping stones, officers officers receive training and are leave for better-paying agencies before the ink is even dry on their certificates. This undermines morale, drives experienced officers away, makes recruiting new officers increasingly difficult, and exposes the county to legal liability. This is not rhetoric, it is reality. I urge you to do everything in your power to develop a real solution, or at the very least demonstrate a sincere effort, before triggering a storm that not even your rainy day fund can withstand. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Lloyd Brown, I'm a resident of Madison County, I happen to work here in the courthouse. Not surprisingly, as in the past, there's a lot of controversy this year pertaining to pay increases for county employees, all county employees, but this year's unique and has focused a lot on the Sheriff's Department. Focus has primarily been on the new jail, but now the focus has somewhat changed because of the pay proposal. One big difference is the division that it's caused, division between county departments and even among friends and family. I'm going to step back for a moment. I'm a retired officer from the Anderson Police Department. For sixteen of the twenty-two years I worked there as a detective. With that said, I understand being a police officer. In a technical sense, that's where I am at my core. I preached for years, a police officer is the only job on this planet, so on every call and every action that they take could result in one of three outcomes, to save a life, take a life, or give a life. That's one reason why we have a murder case being tried next year, because someone gave a life. With that said, let that sink in. No other job on this planet has that responsibility. When I hired on decades ago on the Anderson Police Department, the pay was low, and what they were making was ridiculously low, much lower than what I made. However, currently in the top twenty-one counties, the population in Indiana, Madison County is thirteenth largest, sixteenth in median income. The jail officers in those counties are paid between forty-three thousand dollars and sixty thousand dollars a year, while road deputies make between fifty-one thousand dollars and seventy-four thousand dollars. In fact, if you go to IMPD right now, first year is approximately, in twenty twenty-five, eighty-five thousand, three hundred and thirty-one dollars for an IMPD officer, and by year twenty twenty-eight, it'll be up eleven point seven five percent to ninety-five thousand dollars. In Madison County, there are approximately one hundred and thirty people employed at the Sheriff's Department in their budget. Fifty-three jail employees, forty-three road deputies, and eleven civil courthouse deputies, at least twenty-three people in other responsibilities, in the kitchen, in records, victim advocate. Are they going to get that pay raise, too? No, they're not. What about the other county employees? A five percent bonus, that's nice, but it's not a raise. The real problem is Madison County is one of the lowest-paying government entities in the state of Indiana. I can't answer why, I don't know. I'm not sure if you can either, but that's the way the history has been. What you've talked about is a one-time bonus, that's kicking the can down the road. Outside of these one hundred and thirty people in the jail, one hundred and seven officers, there's six hundred and eleven other county employees that depend on you. In the past, they've had to provide for their families, knowing that they didn't get a raise that year. In fact, there was one stretch of about six years that no county employee got a raise. Their insurance costs went up each year, but they didn't get a raise. In Hamilton County, Grant County, Hancock, any other county in this entire state, all the county employees, Sheriff's Department alike, are expected to do their job in the best way to serve the people of Madison County, or of that county. Those people in other counties have a job to do, and they do it. The people in this courthouse, the people at the county highway garage, the officers standing in back room and over at the jail right now, are expected to give the same services as Hancock County, Hamilton County, Grant County, Cosiowsco, whatever county you want to name, but they're not paid like they should be. None of the county employees, none of the Sheriff's Department. You guys got a hard job, a very hard job. I'll be honest with you, I wouldn't want it, but I've walked in their shoes, and I'm walking in county courthouse employee shoes now. So I've looked at both sides of it. So I charge you with making the best decisions possible that will cover all of the employees, not just the Sheriff's Department, but all of the county employees. That's what the taxpayers of this county have asked for, that's what they elected you for, that's what they demand, that's what I hope you'll give them. That's all I have to say.
Thank you, sir. Thank you. Anyone else?
David Sargent, Anderson, Indiana. First of all, I'd like to thank the council, especially the ones who have put up with me when I'd been constantly texting you with information and having you search for the information, see what's right. I still don't know about the Department of Correction funds that I looked at, but I'll get with you later on that. Supposedly, there was three hundred and sixty-six thousand dollars that were paid to the county, but only ninety thousand, I guess, went to the appropriate.
Did I text you the second number? Did I not text?
The two hundred and sixty-six thousand?
I don't remember what it was. I thought I texted you a second number after that.
That's okay, we can.
Okay, we can go through that later, but first of all, I'd like to address the sheriffs with merit deputies. To train a deputy, they have three or four months of going through the academy. They have field training officers, and all the years of experience of a seasoned deputy is more than well worth it. I only served as a reserve police officer for a small town, but I knew what it was like to walk through the doorway to serve a warrant, knowing there may be an armed individual on the other side willing to shoot at me. That's something, they're putting their lives on the line every day. They're seeing everything, the worst part of society, every day. How many people ask the police officers, come in, you know, eat with us, celebrate with us? When officers show up, it's usually every time, it is the worst time of the public's lives that they've had call nine-one-one. It's not to celebrate, it's because there's a crisis. They deal with this day in and day out. If we lose sixteen, eighteen officers, we're going to have tens of thousands of dollars to replace them, plus all the years' experience. An experienced police officer is worth their weight in gold. You can't just hire someone off the street, put them right out in a squad car. It takes years of supervision, experience, and seasoning, and we don't need to lose these officers. So do everything you can to make them want to stay in Madison County because the cost if we lose them will be a lot harder to bear, even though you have to find the money in the budget. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you.
Catherine Callahan, Lapel, Indiana. I've sat through these meetings for five years, and I've watched manipulation of money. I know these officers have watched me as I was the chief deputy coroner, and how you defunded that office, who's now gonna get over six hundred thousand when we were asking for less than four hundred thousand. The money is there. I can't even begin to imagine how much you're gonna pay in overtime when these officers leave, and you have to cover that, because that's gonna be a really big deal. What was failed to be mentioned here tonight is the acuity in this county. How dangerous is this county? Everybody wants to talk about other things, but these officers serve, actually, the city of Anderson's number eight out of all the cities in Indiana. This county is in the top ten. We hear the prosecutor's office bang their chest at how proud they are at putting, the third highest at putting people in jail. Who do you think takes these people there? These people right here. You talk about other departments and how much they should be worried, EMA, this special, yes, they are all important, but who's the first person who responds to those signs? These gentlemen right here. I cannot even begin to imagine the morale and how awful it is. I've worked in a hospital, I've watched other floors get pay raises, I've watched other doctors come in with higher pay. It kills it. This is a huge problem. The money is there. This council intentionally did not fund PERF and FICA, intentionally. That is a federally funded line item. You took it out, and then you came back and you found the money to put in there this year, but then you said, "Hey, we're gonna cut the commissioners by one point one million dollars last year", and you've given them one point eight million dollars, and you find the money every time. The insult that I have watched tonight to every one of these officers is disgusting. The money is there. If you can come up with the idea of twenty-one percent suddenly, the money's there. I would never, ever sacrifice, ever, the benefits. You want us to give up a drone and how busy this county is with all the cornfields? Are you kidding me? There is nothing these officers can sacrifice. You asked them to give up their vests. What is wrong with you?
Anyone else?
I know you guys have got a hard job, I really do. I've dealt with this for forty-three years. I used to be an employee of the Highway Department, I'm an employee of the Surveyors Office. If you give the officers twenty-one percent raise, are you gonna turn around and give everybody else twenty-one percent raise next year? Their job's not the only one that's hard. You got single moms out here trying to support their families. You've got people out here that go from paycheck to paycheck. Now, to me, if you wanna give them a twenty-one percent raise, that's fine, but you need to think about the other six hundred employees. Are you gonna be willing to step up next year, give them a twenty-one percent raise? I mean, that's only fair. You can't take away from the rest of the employees. Rest of the employees of Madison County, they do a lot for Madison County. Sheriff's Department's not the only ones. I go out on the road, I have to go walk ditches. I don't allow to carry a gun, I don't wanna wear a bulletproof vest. What happens to me if somebody shoots me? I signed up for this job, same as them. I'm not any different, nothing. It's all right there in front of you. You guys got a tough job, but you guys need to think about the rest of your employees in Madison County, not just the Sheriff's Department. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
Ken's coming up, I think.
Hi, my name is Megan Tomlinson, I live here in Anderson. I am from Noblesville though, which is why I wanna say, the number one thing that I've noticed since moving here five years ago or so is how much different the policing is here than in Noblesville. In Noblesville, like, I moved here whenever I just turned twenty-one. So, for instance, in Noblesville, you are getting an Uber because there are officers waiting for you in the parking lot. Here, everyone drives drunk. Not me, okay, I get an Uber, but the reason is because, you know, the crime here is so much different. So as much as Hamilton County is able to go and sit and do that, it's because they're not dealing with issues that we have here, okay? It's a cycle. So, the crime here is bad, right? Okay, so what do we need? Officers, okay? Then we need a prosecutor to prosecute them, but then whenever they get found guilty, what happens to them? Do we let them out because we don't have room in the jail? Well, we have a new jail now, okay? So then what? Now, you know, it's like these things are coming together. Now we have the jail to house everybody in, you know, it's not gonna be super overcrowded, people aren't just gonna be getting out willy-nilly to do stuff again, and we don't wanna fund it, which is, it's crazy, especially whenever you look at the other things in the budget and what is being paid for. So, I'm not an accountant, but I have taken two years of college accounting courses, and I have owned a business for almost ten years now. I do my own bookkeeping, and I've done bookkeeping for other big businesses that I can't say because of NDAs. So I did take the time to go through this, and I believe I may have found a solution I have QR codes, I'll send it to you guys. I have a paper printout of just the changes that I made, which was all based on looking at the previous spending, let me see, really just the previous spending of these different line items. And I wanna say too, like, if you don't want to support our sheriffs, I urge you to go and look at this budget, like, really look at it, because the fact that we are paying forty, or wanting to pay, have paid whatever, forty-five thousand dollars for an election board's office supplies is insane, especially whenever, then you can go back and see, it's like, two hundred dollars for, you know, like, the courts or, I don't know, don't quote me on that, for their office supplies. An election board? And like, they've already spent over thirty thousand this year. For what? For what? You know, so, it's crazy. But we really need these guys, and I tell you what, it took seven months for you guys, not you guys, but for the man that killed my mom to be arrested. Seven months. Let's not make things worse. And that's why I did this, because I really care for that reason, because it cannot continue. So I'm gonna give you these, and this, this one just has like the main changes on it, but I have the link to the spreadsheet and everything that I will give you guys.
Thank you very much.
Hi, I just, you know, I understand the officers go out and they risk their lives every day, but when you get somebody that comes up to the second floor and they say, "Look, I have my gun and nobody stopped me, and it's a contractor, we have a problem", that happened two years ago in my office. Now, how you get through metal detectors and not, you know, the employees, our inspector can't carry a gun, and he goes out and does violations, but you get a contractor that gets all the way through security and up to the second floor with a gun, there's a problem. So they're not the only ones in danger, because they're the ones that allowed for that person to get up to the second floor with a gun. That's what I have a problem with.
Just to clarify for her, that's not a merit deputy, that's a civilian government center employee that could've missed that, but that's not one of these merit deputies over here.
Do you know that, sir?
I do know that, sir.
Excuse me, excuse me, we're not gonna have a conversation, you can take that outside if you'd like. Is there anybody else who would like to?
Yes, I wasn't saying anything about the sheriffs.
Excuse me, wait, uh, is there anybody else who'd like to speak in the public comment?
It's been so many times, you guys do have a hard job, just don't rock it down about it, it's just gonna get harder, you guys know that. The only thing I would ask you guys to look at when you did hiring freeze, you would've went to elected officials and asked us our thoughts, put our two cents in for what it's worth. It's our departments. If you're gonna run our departments, you don't need us anymore. You just told us that you don't need us, because you're gonna make a decision for us. Guys, rethink that hiring freeze, I understand, and I know where you're coming with it, maybe some departments you can't do it with, and me being the smallest department in your general fund would hit me the hardest. By the time you guys make a decision, I could hire somebody, I'm only using myself, we might've lost a good person or two people. It's harder to hire in the county building now than it has in the past. The benefits are not the best that they used to be. Outside, these walls pays quite a bit more, and they offer better benefits. I want you to reconsider that hiring freeze and say, at this point, give us that chance. If you're gonna let us set the budget, which is whatever it is, we have to live in that means of that budget. If you're gonna run our department, then we need to step away at that point. We'll send you guys the phone calls and the emails at that point, because that's what you're telling the elected official that's came here. If you look in the audience, we all showed up today. Every elected official came here. We didn't get to speak on that part of it, you should've included us with that. And for the five percent bonus for the associates, it's six hundred and fifty people, you gotta work it in that it's not a bonus. If you're giving raises, give raises. If you're giving bonus, give bonus, but be fair and equitable across the board. So I'm asking you to look at that. Five percent sounds great at the end of the day, but if you have a perpetual fund with two salaries coming out of two different accounts, you're not getting a full five percent. You didn't think of that when you guys decided five percent bonus. Can't change it now, because you need to ratify it by Tuesday. Look at next year, making it a permanent five percent. They went two years, that's only two and a half percent, inflation's at three, they're already behind the ball at this point. Give them the five percent raise next year, or make a permit like Rob said, you can do it, it's gonna be out there. You might have to take some out of the rainy day fund, you know, at the end of the day, you might be surprised what you have coming in. I know we're playing the worst-case scenario, but if it's not, your biggest asset's everybody's sitting out there that works for this county. Thanks.
Anyone else? Prosecutor.
Dr. Green, I'm Rodney Cummings, I'm the Massey County Prosecutor. Dr. Green, good to see you, we've known each other a very long time. You're one of the most reasonable guys I know, and this plan you came up with reflects that as well. It's a very, very difficult situation that this council is in, and I understand it, and nobody supports the cops more than I do. I had Mason's job when I was an Anderson police officer. I negotiated with the city on behalf of the Anderson FOP that had a hundred and forty-eight officers in those days. It's, the problem with this contract, in my opinion, you can't pay the cops enough as far as I'm concerned. You really can't, but I would say a twenty-one percent pay raise all at one time is as large as I've ever heard of, to be honest with you. And one of the things I hear is that our officers are gonna go to Hamilton County. They're gonna go anyway. Look what's already happened in Anderson. They can't keep guys for three years, and they're, I believe they're making more now than the Sheriff's Department is. But if you look, we can't compete, and you look at, for example, the city of Anderson just passed a forty-one million dollar budget. Fisher's just passed their two-hundred-and-three million dollar budget. The towns aren't that much different in population, it's just that we're never gonna be able to compete with Hamilton County, and the officers that wanna leave are gonna leave. Pay them fairly, pay them enough. Twenty-one seems to be a lot all at once, and when you look at that compared to what we have to do is that our employees, our other employees get nothing for two years, now we're looking at maybe three or four. And Mrs. Norr, I remember a couple of years ago, I don't always agree with a lot of things you say, but I remember you saying, "We have employees in the Sheriff's Department making twenty-nine thousand dollars a year, how do people live on that?" I mean, honestly, how do they live on that? And I'm not saying don't give them the raise, but it does seem like an awful lot, and I never was, Mason's a lot better than I am, because I was never managed to get a raise like that when I was in his position. You can't give, you can't give the cops enough, I agree with that. All at once, that's a huge, huge number, and you have a lot of employees that are sitting back here going, "You don't care about us at all." I mean, that's honestly, you don't care about us at all. So I would say, if the money's out there, first, let me say this, I think the biggest, my biggest complaint with this contract is it's not sustainable. What SB one is gonna do, all the governor's done is push more funding, more requirements for funding, especially local funding, back to the local communities. I don't see how you're gonna sustain this, you say two years, I don't, there's no way after that it's gonna be possible, I don't know how that's gonna happen. Be creative, but I don't know where the money's coming from, because you look at, it's not gonna hit us as hard as some of these smaller communities, but we're gonna get hit, we're not gonna have as much money, and we're borrowing money now to try to, to try to fund this contract. We gotta have, the sheriff has to kick in, you know, our law enforcement fund, I will say this, we can't compete with Hamilton County, we lose our deputies there a lot, and we came here with a law enforcement tax. Some of the members of this council didn't support it, and it didn't pass this council. It passed countywide, but it didn't pass this council. But I see you're happy to spend that money that comes in now, and I don't know where you'd be without it, because a half a million of that dollars went into the sheriff's retirement fund. And honestly, that's another perk, they have one of the best retirement funds there is. I mean, they get, they don't, the Anderson Police Department gets half of the patrolman's salary, for, you know, these guys are getting a lot more than that in retirement, a lot more than that. And I don't begrudge them, you can't give the Sheriff's Department, you can't give them enough money, but there are other employees here that are looking around going, "What are we getting? We have bills to pay too." And they're not making nearly as much, you know, when you've got employees making twenty-nine thousand dollars. I would concur with what Ken said. The bonuses, the problem with the bonuses is, it's not sustainable, it doesn't go, it doesn't go on their pensions, and when they, when they go two or three or four years without a raise and the benefits go down, they're working for less every year when prices on everything is going back up. You have to figure out a way to take care of these employees as well. I know this is gonna pass, I think, Scott, I trust you, and with the money we have, it's probably the most reasonable place we're at right now. But if there was a way to make those raises for our employees permanent, I think it would cure, it would cure a lot of the animosity that some of our employees have here. So that's what I would suggest, please keep that in mind, please look, please look at some of the other employees as well. I know, I know the Sheriff's Department are not gonna be completely happy with the bill that passes here, like you said, everybody's not gonna be happy, but maybe it's the best we can come up with right now. I would just say, don't forget about the rest of our employees too. Thank you.
I just wanna clarify.
Motion adjourned. We're done, yeah, we're gonna have, we have a motion to adjourn, is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close?
Tim was not talking about you.
Ma'am?
Okay. I was, I was, I was.
Okay. I was, I was.
Okay.
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 Okay.